Or as we say in the school business, good morning, boys and girls.
Good morning.
We're -- thank you for that. We're gonna just reconvene in a moment. I know that the State Board is still in its session, but it's necessary apparently for Chairman Rogers to call the joint committee meeting together. I did want to just kick this off. I'm gonna do a few protocol items and then turn it over to President John Austin. But wanted to mention, as Chairman of the Board and as State Superintendent, we certainly can't thank you enough for taking the time out of your schedule to join us. The two subcommittees very much appreciate the opportunity to interact with you. Had the chance to meet with Chairman Rogers a number of times and have great respect for the work that he's doing. Thanks for taking this opportunity to meet together. What I would do is let's do this. Maybe it's an opportunity for the Chair to call your own session together and then we'll proceed from there.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And first and foremost, I really appreciate the opportunity to have our committees sit with all of you folks. I think that there is a lot going on in education and with that, it's extremely important that we have a top-to-bottom and bottom-to-top conversation so that we can make sure we're all on the same page and allow our kids to get educated in its appropriate fashion. And based on these times, the opportunity is never better. So with that, first, let's go to -- I would like to call to order -- it's weird, I don't have the gavel. And I appreciate that. Yeah. I've had a few thrown at me, so I appreciate that, too. But call to order the Subcommittee, Appropriations Subcommittee on School Aid Fund. And attendance, please.
Chairman Rogers?
Here.
Representatives Poleski?
Here.
Bumstead?
Here.
Potvin?
President.
Lipton?
Here.
Ananik?
Here.
We're all here.
That's even more impressive. We are all here and reasonably on time. There's a standing joke with that. Let's move to call to order the Subcommittee, Appropriations Subcommittee for Department of Education.
Chairman Rogers?
Here.
Representatives Poleski?
Here.
Bumstead?
Here.
Potvin?
President.
Bauer?
Here.
Dillon?
Voila, 100 percent attendance. And with that, I shall turn the microphone back over to you. And I was concerned we were gonna have to do karaoke, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. And by the way, one of the protocols to mention is if you're able, we'd certainly love to host you at lunch. We'll have more description of where to join us for that at about noon. So any of you that could make that, we'd love to interact with you in a more informal way. Right now, I think part of my job as the Chair would be to ask our own Board to make some introductions and then we can go from there. And President John Austin first.
John Austin, President of the Board.
Cassandra Albrecht, Vice President.
Nancy Danhoff, Secretary.
Ashley Mistroz, Member.
And former President.
I'm Greg Tedder from the Governor's Office.
Paul Gilbinsky, Michigan's Teacher of the Year for 2012. I'm a Business Management Marketing and Technology Instructor at the Oakland Schools Technical Campus Southeast.
He's terrific.
Heidi Wiser, I also serve on the National Social Government Board and we did with Higher Education Consortium.
Dan Barna, Member from Detroit.
Dr. Richard Zilek, Natsby Delitt for the Board, the National Association State Boards of Education, and I'm from Dearborn.
Mary Ann Yared McGuire, I'm the Treasurer of the Board.
And I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm staff to the Board.
And I'm Mike Flanagan, I'm State Superintendent and Chair of the Board.
And this is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I think it's even more appropriate that we kinda got together on our common goal of making education better for our students. I know you took role, but did you wanna go a little further in terms of introduction of members?
Well, I'd like the individuals to please introduce themselves, including staff, and also give a little bit of feedback. And by the way, with the Teacher of the Year, he's had to tolerate me at the Southwest Oakland County Superintendent's Meetings, and I appreciate that. He's been very proactive with that group and we've had quite a bit of dialogue. In fact, I believe we have another one coming up this Friday.
We do.
I had a hunch. Thank you. With that, Representative Potvin will go around the table.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Phil Plutman, I live in Cadillac. I represent the 102nd District, which is Whiteford, Osceola, and Macosta Counties. I'm a former teacher. I also was a former businessman.
State Representative John Bumstead, I represent the 100th District, which is Nuego Lake and Oceana Counties. Former businessman before this new venture.
My name is Earl Poleski. I'm from the 64th District, which is the City of Jackson and eight surrounding townships. And I'm an accountant by profession.
Mark Wolf of the House Fiscal Agency.
Bethany Rixell, House Fiscal Agency.
Good morning. Ellen Cogan Lipton, I'm in my second term. I represent the 27th District, which is six cities, Berkeley, Oak Park, Huntington Woods, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Hazel Heart. And I teach four school districts. And I am a patent attorney in my former life.
John Bauer, I'm the State Representative from the 68th District. You are in my district since the day today, so explosive Lansing and Magic Township. I'm in my sixth and final year in House of Representatives. In addition to the Department of Ed Appropriations Subcommittee, I'm the Democratic Vice Chair of the Higher Education Appropriations Subcommittee. I, for four years, I was on the Community Colleges Subcommittee for Prop. This year, I'm also on a community health. I'm a former teacher. I taught in a high school years ago. I also taught for 15 years as a second job, a night job, adult education for the whole schools. I worked at a hospital for a number of years, so, before being elected. My parents are both retired teachers. My sisters are teachers, so I come from a family of many educators. Nice to meet you.
I'm Jim Ananik. I live in Flint and represent the 49th District. Prior to coming here, this is my first term, I was a secondary school teacher in the Oakland Schools.
I'm Brandon Dillon. I'm in my first term from Grand Rapids, representing southeast and northeast sides of the City of Grand Rapids. And prior to my election, I was on Senate staff, so while the staffers know, I know we're all working.
And again, Bill Rogers, Representative for currently the 66th District, soon to be the 42nd District, which means I will have to move offices. My father, for background regarding education, is a retired educator. He actually, as I tease him, he's already been retired, and I'm older than he is when he retired. And he reminds me of that, by the way. My daughter is actually in her first year as a second grade teacher in Flushing. Passion of hers, and God bless her, this is something she's always wanted and finally has achieved that goal and thoroughly enjoys it. I happen to sit on six budgets, of which many of you are well aware. My fame is to our school aid and the Department of Education. And I also deal with, as we affectionately say, the alternative to education, which is the corrections budget. And that's a pretty sad state of affair when you hear some states actually look at third grade reading levels and then gear up for bed space in their prisons, predicated on that as an anticipation. So it's something that we all have to be very concerned with and monitor closely. But with that, I'm gonna send this back to you. And thank you very much again for this opportunity.
Thanks so much. You know, first of all, thank you for your support. We don't wanna miss the opportunity to thank you for the support of the Department budget. We can't thank you enough. I would say in that same respect that when you come into this building and you see four floors, two of them are ours. And of that, almost all of them are funded by federal money, as you know. You would know this better than anyone because of the Prop's Committee. We have 13 people, basically, that are funded to do state work. We, with the transition of the library a number of years ago, those are some additional folks. And then with the Reform Office, there's some folks in that that are kinda connected with this EAA work and what are called the persistently lowest achieving schools. But the fundamental group that actually works within the Department, there's 13 people. Back at a time when I was a local superintendent, it was hundreds. So I can't thank you enough for the support to kinda keep us at least at the level we're at to try to be able to function and appreciate that, the recent action that you've taken. What we kind of agreed on for protocols was that you have agenda in front of you and supporting documents that you've probably received previously. And then we thought we'd have opening comments from Board President John Austin and Board Secretary and Chair of the Board's Legislative Commission Committee, Nancy Danhoff. We have Republicans and Democrats that are elected, as you know, so it's a nice mix. And this could really be a time to kinda model. There's media here, there's, I see a number of advocate groups. It would be a nice time to model what we really do pretty well, which is work together, across the aisle, and keep our kids in mind first and foremost. And then I turn it back to Chairman Rogers, who could also do the same. And then we thought we'd go, in this case, start with Chairman Rogers to see if there are any comments and what comments and opportunities there would be from members. And we'd alternate those back and forth. So presentation, kind of presentation, and then alternating with questions and comments, if that makes sense. So President John Austin would kick this off.
Chairman Rogers and distinguished legislators, we're both honored and are really appreciative that you would come and sit with us and visit in our house. And hopefully, we can trade this, we can come visit you. But we really wanna deepen our engagement and have, get to the discussion part so we can find a lot of common ground, which is what we do with the Board, and I know we can, and deal with the tough issues in education. I'm gonna very briefly try to note some of the priorities this Board has advanced and some of the budget implications, 'cause I know you all are in the business of appropriating the budget implications for the kind of education priorities that we, on a bipartisan basis, have been advancing together. Nancy Danhoff, who chairs, along with Cassandra Albrecht, our Legislative Committee, I think will talk a bit about our hopes for how we can continue to engage, our continued dialogue to work with you. So, you know, this Board, since I've been on the Board for 12 years now, we really have, as Mike indicated, had a strong bipartisan agreement on some major directionals for education. High standards, high learning expectations for all our young people as the key to helping those young people achieve. So rigorous curriculum, Michigan merit curriculum, the continued implementation of that kind of high expectations for all our young people. Honestly assessed, honestly reported as a key ingredient. We have been strongly supportive of really reinvention and change in the way we deliver that education that all kids need. We have been encouraging new ways of delivering, integrate the curriculum, blended learning, distance learning, integrated high school and post-secondary learning venues, early college credit taking, you know, before this governor for many years, encouraging those early colleges, middle colleges, early college credit taking, the, now what we're calling the anytime, anyplace agenda, which is right to accelerate learning. And it works for at-risk kids, kids who are challenged, kids who are taking advanced work that's meaningful, integrated with career context, too. We can, and Paul's campus, you know, some of us were down there shows, you can integrate the needed academic skills that we're demanding in a career context that's even more exciting and more applicable and more needed by employers when we do it that way. So we have to continue that course. We have consistently said the key to young people achieving are educators, administrators, and teachers who light that fire of learning and make learning come alive. We need to do much better, and we've been pushing to better prepare administrators, certify them, fundamentally better prepare educators, better support educators, better align their ongoing professional learning and mastery. We supported teacher tenure reform to, if it can be done, in a way that supports, with supportive evaluation, that helps them get better. And that's the kind of agenda that is most powerful, we think, for getting the outcomes we want. We also have been clear about needing a clear accountability system, a clear ranking of schools on their performance to show where we need to focus our efforts to help them turn around, shut down, or create new choices. And we have work to do together, I think, to create a clear, aligned, one accountability system that ranks the schools, that is integrated with the accreditation system and says, this is how we view our schools, where they stand, so we can focus our efforts to either help improve those who aren't performing or create new choices if we can't do that. So that accountability system, we are, the waiver request that the Department has, the continued discussions with the Quality Committee on what that needs to look like, we've gotta figure out how to get that accountability system in one place and in one understood articulation for our public. How does this translate into finances for schools? The Board, again, in a bipartisan way, if you looked at the material we sent, we've said, we have to have a P-20 system that delivers this rigorous quality education so everyone is college and career ready. We need to support with resources early childhood so that all families who want that opportunity have it. We need, at the other end, to make sure we have post-secondary opportunities available and supported well so that our young people and adults can realize the promise of post-secondary opportunity. We have to finance post-secondary opportunity at a level that allows all of us to get the post-secondary technical training and advanced degrees that are needed. K-12, we've gotta provide sufficient resources to deliver a quality education. That's easier said than defined. So we know that with all the changes in how we deliver education and all the changes in even the business model of education, which we have supported, encouraging shared services and encouraging treatment of the legacy cost, healthcare pension differently, so that we're saving money but putting it into the new ways of delivering education into the classroom that are meaningful. We are initiating, and we want your all's help, a study this year of what does it take to pay for the quality education that we need? Because it's been a long time since Proposal A. There's a lot of new ways we're organizing, delivering education to get the outcomes. We need to look hard as a state, and we really want your help and everyone's help with, what does that picture look like and how do we finance education that gets the outcomes, that is a performance-driven system that ensures all our young people are emerging, college and career ready? We've made particular note of some of the ways we think money does matter. Again, pre-K, higher ed, we encourage sufficient resources to those bookends of the system. We do wanna reward achievement growth as an incentive to focus on results. We think teacher quality and administrator quality are, if anything, the main driver of education achievement, particularly for kids who are starting from the bottom. We're gonna hear later at public hearing some comments from our National Board Certified Teachers who just happened to show up today. You know, I've been and others on the Board investing in teachers, helping them have the tools, helping them find rewards, helping them stay in the classroom as master teachers. The state has been abysmal in supporting master teachers, finding career satisfaction in the classroom where they can turn on that light of learning. You know, North Carolina has 18,000 National Board Certified Teachers. We've got 380. Because they made it a priority, they paid for the program, it works. We need that kind of governor's call for master teacher support. We need to do more to deliver support for our teachers so they can deliver the content in effective ways that get the results we want. We do wanna expand early college credit taking, dual enrollment, that does require some effort, some resource, or at least changing the incentive structure. I don't think we've gotten there yet, the legislation that's been moving, so we're finding ways to encourage more of our secondary schools to partner with post-secondary and make that early college credit opportunity come alive. We're all for rewarding shared services consolidation, treatment of legacy costs. We want to provide the support for training for the Common Core implementation that is a priority for us. And finally, you know, we've been eager to persuade folks that we're serious about accountability, we're serious about policing charter schools, we're serious about supporting turnaround efforts of schools that need help. As Mike indicated, this Department is a skeleton, a very active and energetic and effective skeleton with the people that are here. But we need, every time we make one of these reform moves, we've gotta have some resources in terms of implementation, policing, and support. And so keeping some of that support tied to all the reform that we're pushing is essential so that the Department can do its job. So those are some of the ways we've tried to articulate where budget priority needs to flow in terms of the education priorities that we've tried to lay out. But again, this is a partnership. It is not us over here throwing, lobbying ideas towards you. We need to figure out how to do some of this stuff together, and Nancy's gonna talk a bit about our hopes for how we can continue to engage actively with you all. And really appreciate, again, your all's coming over here and having this discussion. It's been one-sided so far.
Yeah.
That'll change quick, I would say.
You know, speaking of John and Nancy, tradition's been, since the Governor's Summit has been in place, Education Summit, that the State Superintendent speaks either in the morning or in the afternoon, and the Governor speaks the other time. And this year, I asked the Board if they would be willing to fill that slot with a Republican and a Democrat who would speak together about the common issues. And I think not only did they do just a great job, but I think it really modeled how we and you can work together and do work together to get things done. I would say that you didn't have the benefit of our, obviously, of our last meeting where there was deep and rich discussion about what this finance slash innovation study should look like. And what we were, what came out of that meeting, I think it's fair to say, is to not look in the rearview mirror of what education's been for the last 50 years and what the financing is for that, but to look through the windshield and say, what's it gonna look like? I mean, I have a two-year-old granddaughter that, you guys have heard this story, but my wife puts out these books during the holidays, these traditional books, and she came up and kept trying to swipe the cover. Not steal, but I mean swipe it like in an iPad way, because it, so we're thinking in terms of our role with teacher preparation, what is that world like now? How much more dramatic will it be, very different in three years when Ella Grace is in kindergarten? Because her brain is being wired in a way that's so different than the rest of us with things like the iPad, that we need to be ready and we need to be ready quickly for what teachers' skills are gonna need to be. And then, and then when we envision that system through this work together, it's gonna be, what would those costs be? And the costs are gonna be different in a sense than in the past because there's blended learning now, there's online learning, there's traditional learning, and you know, that's, so it's really a hearty task, but the folks I work with here at the Department are really up and excited about that. Our next step was gonna be, and is, to ask Nancy Danhoff to kinda talk about, from the Legislative Committee, at the State Board's point of view.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming so much. I really appreciate this a lot. Take off the, no, I'm sorry. The education system in Michigan, and the, excuse me, the education of Michigan's young people has been uppermost on the State Board's mind for some time and will always be there, as it has been in this Department. It has become clear to me that it is on the uppermost end of your minds as well as a legislator. And that creates a challenge that traditionally, in large groups such as the policymakers and lawmakers in any group, in any state, in any country, is how do we make the most use, how do we leverage our time and our ability so that we don't reinvent the wheel unwittingly or perhaps have unintended consequences because of our, the lack of capacity to work together with time constraints, with meeting times and places? So it has become really critical to this Board and to the Legislative Committee to look at ways that we can really communicate well with you and hopefully, we would assume that you with us as well. So one of the things we've done over the last year that we hope has been helpful is as legislation has been considered or has happened, and as we have issues that we really believe strongly in that need that the legislature needs to be aware of as well, we have passed resolutions that we can then send on to you, which hopefully has been informative, hopefully has been helpful in understanding where we're coming from and how we look at things. But I think we need to look beyond that because if we're to be truly successful, we have to think collaboratively about how we can bring those opportunities together to share the combined knowledge of both groups, to get those questions and concerns out on the table that we all can hear at the same time. And so to that end, we are looking for other ways that we can work with you as well. And just as a few things that we have thought about, first of all, we welcome this opportunity today in this face-to-face opportunity to enter into these discussions, but we would like to enhance that communication in a number of ways. We'd like to continue the opportunity for combined meetings, whether it's with these subcommittees or with others. We hope that that's something that we can continue to do. We would welcome hosting them and we would like being hosted. So we can do that individually or as Boards and committees as a whole, but we welcome that. We would welcome joint hearings on key education issues. One of the things that we found so incredibly helpful in 2005 and '06 when we first started our education reforms with new high school graduation requirements and with no child left behind on our plates, was rather than hold individual public hearings, we held them jointly. Wayne Kyper's, excuse me, boy, I almost forgot that. Wayne Kyper's was very instrumental in helping us put together these meetings across the state and locally so that the people in local districts and those parents and educators who really had ground zero looks at what was happening and what needed to happen, were able to come together and speak to both the Legislature and the Department of Education and the State Board of Education so that we could make good joint policy and law. I think it worked really well for us. We would welcome that again. We're looking on a new level of reforms. We're looking at a Legislature and a State Board that was not necessarily here in 2005 and '06. And so to the extent that we need to look at that again, we welcome that. We look at shared opportunities and special and unique opportunities to see good education practices. You've heard of our State Teacher of the Year, Paul over here, who has opened CTE campuses? We believe that as much as we have seen as a State Board, and as critical as it has been to our decision-making practices because of what we've seen there and witnessed, that we would like to invite you, too, either individually or as a group, to be able to come and witness what happens when you combine the whole of education in both content expectations and career and lifelong learning opportunities? Because it is so exciting. It is so gratifying to see our young people who know that they have to have deep content knowledge and who also understand that they are preparing for a lifetime in a profession, in fact, several professions probably, some of which we don't even know today what, how they, how they will play out. So we would welcome that. We would also welcome opportunities that you find available to you that give us insight, that give us preparedness. So as we make state policy, that we can have the benefit of what you have found to be the most helpful as well. We would welcome invitations from the Legislature to individually or as a Board attend as guests to your committee meetings, to your hearings, to your subcommittee meetings, to your special committee meetings. Oftentimes, I think that we have information that could be very, very helpful in your consideration and you just didn't even know that we had it, so of course, you didn't ask. Oftentimes, you have critical information that can help us with our decision-making and our policymaking that we didn't know you had, so we don't ask. And finally, I think what would really be, we would really welcome is that if you ever have a question, if you ever think there's a possibility that we might have something that would be of interest, or that you think that we should know, as we, you know that we're in the midst of a policymaking time at our Board, considering a certain topic, and you have things on your, on your committees that are similar or like, pick up the phone, call us. Let us know, hey, did you realize we were looking at X, Y, Z? And, you know, what have you found that might help us with that? And we need you to know that this is where we're headed with this. And likewise, we as a Board need to do the same thing. So we're hoping in all of these ways that we can continue this collaborative effort. We all know that in all great societies and all great democracies, that when you can join together policy and lawmaking groups in a collaborative way, that we really do serve the needs of our people and our children that we all hold so dear. So I wanna thank you so much for taking time out and hope that we can continue this process.
Thank you, Nancy. And sometimes it's our great staff, you have some folks that are just exceptional that we work with, and we have Lisa and Ross, that we really think a lot of the nitty-gritty gets done at that level. And please feel free to continue to use us in that sense, myself included. Chairman Rogers?
So you're telling me now Lisa is actually your staffer? I thought she was visiting my office way too much. And by the way, I would like to extend an open invitation to all of our meetings. I am of the firm belief that we do need to see each other face-to-face and talk over things. One of the things that we find in appropriations is everybody wants money. They don't know They don't always want to justify it, but they always want money. But when you are, and I've had these conversations with the department by chance, when the charter bill came through, are there any accounting for new students in our budget? Unfortunately, the answer was yes, there were. With the cyber, it wasn't bill, no, a number of students, so we have nothing there. If we, as we are progressing through time, especially when we're trying to work on these budgets and work on them, I'm a, I have a bias, I would rather work on them two and three years, four years out. And granted, they're not fixed in stone, but that's what we have been trying to look at is what impacts are going to be out there so we can plan for them. This open dialogue helps us in that direction because we all have a vested interest in our kids. And as I've spoken to a lot of groups, mine is very biased, I would like to retire someday, and they need to get good jobs. It's as simple as that. When you spoke of the career aspect, frequently I have said in committee, and unfortunately to my members, I will apologize again, but at 3:00 in the morning, are you going, and your heat goes out in the middle of the winter, are you going to call your PhD friend or are you going to call me and ask for my HVAC guy to come and fix your furnace? I have a hunch you're going to call that. We have set an image for so long that little Johnny and little Mary should be doctors or lawyers, no offense, and all those good things, but you forget that when your car breaks down, you're seeking a mechanic. And for any of you looking underneath the hood now, that has become extremely technical. I've had the opportunity to actually sit in an M1 tank because the company that I ran built a custom battery pack for it. And I'm thinking I'm going into a bunch of grease and cogs and everything else, it's one of the most sophisticated piece of equipment I've ever seen in my entire life. So this whole dynamic for how we are educating and what we're educating has changed, and we have to give that opportunity, as I affectionately call the Y path. When it comes to, what we did, by the way, during the summer is took advantage, we had a summer work group, bipartisan. We had colleagues come up every single week up here to Lansing to talk over these very educational issues, knowing with the way finances were and everything else. We sought permission from the speaker, he allowed us to have it, very casual conversation. And a lot of the things that we were looking at even in our budget were a result of some of the ideas that were generated. For those of you that may or may not know, but Peter Gorman, who was at the time the superintendent for the Broad Award-winning school district, Charlotte Mecklenburg, two years running, now in the private sector, flew in from North Carolina to speak to this group. I had the opportunity to meet with Jamie Valmer, schools can't do it alone, three or four occasions, just one-on-one. I'm currently listening to, which has got to be very difficult on all of you, is a CD by some scientist that claims that we actually need to put kids in gym shorts instead of sending them in the seat because that enhances their capacity to learn. That's what I got to listen to on the way up this morning. So you know, we have a lot of different thoughts and processes out there, and that's where, again, through the summer and through listening to these things, as all of my colleagues have, we have generated some of the ideas behind our budget. We talk about, one of the biggest things is IT consolidation. We have this vision that why, when we're pulling all of this information, why is it not in one single form? If I want page one from any school in the district, why isn't it page one and page 50 might be the MEEP score? Why are we having to try to jumble all this and go through such administrative nightmare? That's what we're speaking of when we talk about our ideas in regard to IT consolidation. We're not taking over the world, we're just saying the presentation by whomever gets this software contract, the report better look the same. If you go and buy a book on whatever topic it was, and buy the same book a week later, I'd like to think page one is still page one and page 50 is still page 50. We feel we should be able to work towards that. E-readers, I have polled everyone when I have spoke, is are we there yet? Are we to the point, to your, to your point, that the kids are changing so much? I'm sorry to say I'm a hard copy guy, what can I tell you? But I watch these kids and what they do, and we also have to, as an appropriations group, start to look toward that and work with you people when we decide it's becoming time and we need to know that in advance so we can start to plan for it. Maybe we can actually put it into an account, a bank account, a savings account. And by the way, when I was a banker, we were paying savings accounts at five and a quarter percent, just want to remind you of that. Now you can't even get a CD for that. But those are the kinds of things that we actually are looking at also, which are integral into what you folks are doing. And that's why I think it is important we continue a conversation. When we took testimony, we had a lot of conversation on the performance piece. The biggest piece of the budget that we changed is in regard to between performance and best practices, is we took out the performance for today because we say, we're looking at a growth model now, individual growth model. If a child that can't even write their name can write their name at the end of the year, that's real growth. That teacher has accomplished a substantial amount. If the 4.0 student is now 4.001, that's significant growth on that end. But we should reward those people instead of punishing for what we're trying to do. Special ed is a big issue. When we're talking about funding in general, now is the time to have that conversation. We kept hearing throughout all the testimony, the different funding levels. High school is more than middle school. Elementary school is the cheapest. Special ed is definitely up there. Maybe that should be part of our conversation now, is is there a better mousetrap? And that dialogue should always be out there. I don't have the answer. Maybe some of my colleagues have figured it out today, and I hope so. But that is the kinds of things we need to do and work together with so that we're not crossing barriers, we're actually crossing barriers, but we're not interfering, we're working together in order to accomplish that. P-20 system, I think we, to my knowledge, we all believe in that. P-20. But when you do that, when you're forming these budgets, we have been so used to K-12 that we have to get over that hurdle. Folks, we can't do it the same way. We have to change the categoricals, we have to change a lot of things and say, how do we get that level place of funding so that it's sustainable and long-lasting? And in order to do that, those are the conversations we're having in regard to how, again, we place this budget. But going from that performance to this growth model, because we know, we keep hearing about Common Core, we keep hearing about smarter balanced, I think that's where you're going to be able to help us a lot so we understand really where we're going and what it really does so we can prepare for it. We heard it loud and clear, we figure we're going to that growth model, and in order to do so, we took that funding from performance instead and slid it into a, we'll call it an IT grant, because we want to actually prepare for it instead of wait until two years comes by and all of a sudden you say, by the way, you start that test, it's computer adaptive, and do it tomorrow. Having visited a lot of schools, traditional, cyber, blended, charter, you find there's a lot of disparity amongst them, especially in regard to technology. This is an opportunity to get these people and say, we, it is coming, you can prepare, and that's what you're responsible for doing. And then when we get there, maybe that performance piece, we slide it right back in, exactly as it is. So those, that was probably the biggest thing, along with, in our case, from the House side, the MIPSers piece. It's strangling that we have a unfunded liability that is comparable to our entire state budget. We could all walk away, clear all the buildings out today, and bear, and then just pay for the unfunded liability, not the ongoing. That's frightening to me. So as a result, taking that approach, that still gets money into the classroom but pays down our debt. That's one thing that we have taught, and I hope we continue to teach, all of our kids. There is responsibility. If you have a mortgage, if you have a car payment, you are expected to pay for it and not let it go on and on and on. Unfortunately, it has, we're willing to tackle that, and that's how we approach this budget. So that was probably one of the key features in basically our direction of what we're trying to accomplish. We'd like to think that we were physically prudent, may well tell us if we were somewhat accurate. And that way, we did not have to go back and say, oh, by the way, our targets were off, we kind of spent to the max, and you're now going to have to adjust again. We felt that that was unreasonable, untenable, and at this time, we look at this entire package and continue to grow as to how are we truly going to educate our kids, how are we going to fund it? Instead of having all of these little teeny, what I'll call as earmarks, let's, let's straighten it out. This is the opportunity. I mean, we're not, we are not flush yet, we're not out of the woods, but there is a lot of positive feedback going on out in the world today, and especially in Michigan, where it is starting to come back. Now we can prepare for it. And I feel it's our obligation to do so and continue that process. With that, I mean, unfortunately, I get to speak way too much, as many of my colleagues will admit to. Are there any comments or questions from our committee? Now, don't be silent, you have this opportunity finally. Representative, Vice Chair Pulaski.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. I want to mention that my mother was a, was a teacher here in Michigan, retired from doing that. And I've got two sons, each of which are graduates of Michigan universities, neither of whom is working in this state in this field. My older kid is a graduate of Eastern Michigan University with an English degree but no teaching certificate, qualified to write the great American novel and not much else. What he has, what he has done is to go to Korea where he's teaching English as a second language in a culture that clearly values education. The kids that he taught first were, they would go to the normal school, and then after school, the parents would be paying for the extra stuff, the music class, the, the English class, the, you know, whatever it is that they want to do to enhance. And they go to school 220 days a year. Now, do we need to go to 220 days a year? Perhaps not. But we are going to be competing with those in our world who find education to be the key to their population's excellence. And we need to be thinking about that. My, my view for a long time has been that our, our calendar is an 1880s model, that it needs to be updated to the 21st century. We don't have kids that need to leave, leave school in June to go work on the farm, bringing in the harvest. We need them to be in school. That's where they'll draw their harvest. I think also, I'm just tossing out innovative or thoughts here, I think we should be thinking about, I think Chair Rogers brought this out, the potential for a two-pronged education track once people get to high school. One for those with an, the inclination and drive to go to university, and those with the inclination and drive to take more of a vocational track, both of which honorable work, both of which very remunerative, and both of which we need pretty, pretty well in our, in our society. The computer adaptive testing that Representative Rogers brought up, I think is a really excellent idea, I'd like to see us move toward that. We heard from educators that the MEEP is really not designed to measure student growth, is not so much designed to, to assist with teacher evaluation. But computer adaptive testing, it seems to me, is, is better designed for that sort of thing, and, and our, our budget as we propose it encourages accelerated adoption of that sort of a process, so I'd like to see us move in that way. The MIPSers reform also to which Chair Rogers referred, I think is important. Our unfunded liability is potentially a drag on our economy, and we need to be thinking about how best to, to address those unfunded liabilities. And I could go on and on too, I think, Mr. Chair, but simply note those are very, very, hopefully reasonably cogent arguments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent?
That's good. We'll alternate then, and board members that might like to comment, which is I, please.
One of our responsibilities, both in the legislature and in the board, is to see through the many FATS, the many self-interested appeals that are, that are made. And there are a number of untruths that get popular credence because there are interests pushing them, and unfortunately, media often feeds these faulty assumptions. Currently, we are confusing credentialism with education, as if the only place you could get an education was a school. Those who are, have credentials to sell have a vested interest in encouraging this assumption, this notion. So we won't recognize any education unless it's certified or credentialed, et cetera. Another foggy area is technology. I have met so many people who have been wowed by videos produced by the Apple Corporation to convince everyone that the nature of learning is changing, and that's simply nonsense. If you want to talk about technical innovation, think about the shift from when we adopted electricity from the 19th century to the 20th century. The shift from kerosene to light bulbs made education safer, it gave kids another thing to learn how to use, they had to learn new skills like how to flip the switch rather than turn up the, the thing, but it did not fundamentally transform the nature of education. And neither will current technology. If anything, current technology makes traditional education more important than ever. In the knowledge explosion, the, an understanding of the structure of learning, of what we used to call the core courses, becomes all the more important. In the same way, there are other matters, core, you know, the smarter balance and the core curriculum and things like this. These are tempests in the teapot. They will neither deliver, I mean, I, I think they're basically a good idea, but they will not deliver what people are expecting. Because if you look at standardized testing that we put on our kids and on, on the, on the world scene, you know, we're basically studying and testing the same things. My own experience as a parochial teacher has been, our Lutheran schools have never adopted the Michigan curriculum framework, but our stand, our scores on the MEEP have been pretty good. Because the real, the real challenge is to teach effectively, because that, that basic body of learning, what E.D. Hirsch called cultural literacy, is, is pretty much the same throughout the United States. So if you can effectively teach that, whether you've adopted the same curriculum as the state of Texas or not, is not going to make that much difference. I mentioned the knowledge explosion, and I guess the final thought that, that I would earnestly encourage members of the legislature as well as our own board, the real purpose of education, it's got nothing to do with finding a job. The purpose of education is to improve your life. If I can read, I can access other people's experience. I grown, life becomes more meaningful because I see meaning in the world all around me. Now, that will pay off if I can, you know, learn to follow directions and read a manual, I mean, that does transfer to the job scene. But to view education as job preparation is a fundamental misunderstanding and betrayal of the original reason that we established schools for all Americans. So I'm, I guess, thank you for letting me pontificate here, but I, I think there are some big ideas that underline, that underlie the many, many decisions that have to be made in the county budget and begin with those, I mean, let's all work with the big ideas in mind.
I, I appreciate that, and I had many folks contact us in regard to getting back to the basics. And we all know if you can't read, then it is tough to survive just because you probably can't even read a stop sign. Or where you're supposed to turn right or left, or whatever the store name is, you might hit a few bad ones here. Representative Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it's ironic that you said that because what I've been writing down here, one phrase that were back to basics, and I, my, I think it was... And I, my, fortuitous, yesterday I was visiting my stepdaughter's school in Grand Rapids, a city high school. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's probably one of the best, I think, the best public high schools in the state, in terms of test scores and achievement level. And my mom's a teacher there, too, so I'm biased towards it. But one of the things, which we've just had a really good discussion, and I'm glad I came today, about a lot of the innovations and the reforms and trying to struggle with changes in technology and how we educate kids. But I think, you know, it really brought home to me yesterday, this idea of getting back to basics is even more important, because the first classroom we went into, there was 42 kids in it. And it was a room that you literally couldn't get around, the teacher couldn't get around to get to all the kids. It was folding tables, not desks, lined up. And my wife was having an issue with the teacher when I didn't talk and say, work things out, but she said, you know, this is nothing. There's another class, and that's 46 students. That's an English class. And for me, you know, it really, I think it really goes to the point that we can do a lot of these reforms, whether it's teacher tenure reform, whether it's moving to more cyber schools, or whatever you have, whatever your inclination is, but especially in urban education, where, frankly, that's where most of the challenges are in educating our young people. If we have classes, and then I went to my mom's classroom, and they had 31 kids, and that seemed like there was nobody in there, but that's still a huge classroom. If we, if you are going to have classrooms in these schools where teachers are basically just engaging in crowd control, and there is no one-on-one real interaction with the students, I think we can do all these innovations. We can talk about core curriculum. We can talk about teacher evaluation. It's really going to be meaningless if we don't make that commitment. And it's really what we're talking about, is funding. And I'm not a believer that, and I think most of my colleagues would agree with me on this, and not a believer that just throwing money at a problem is going to solve the problem. But you certainly can't go the other way and just say that reform, just reforming the system and not spending any money to implement those reforms is going to solve the problem. So I think there's a lot of general agreement where we, I think hopefully this enhanced dialogue can bring us to a point where we, you know, we reach an understanding and a conclusion and a strategy for moving forward that does recognize that we can't continue to have an education system modeled in the 1880s, and that we can't, you know, continue to have, look at our students that might be swiping the top of a book to try to open it. We also can't expect to have the same funding levels that we had 10 years ago and expect teachers to do more with less. I think it's going to require both sides, if you will, of this education debate to understand that one doesn't happen without the other. You can't have meaningful reforms without meaningful funding. And on the other side, you can't just continue to throw money at a system that needs significant reforms. So I'm hopeful that this enhanced dialogue will maybe bring us to that point. We're not there yet, but I think we can get there.
Thank you for that, by the way. That's why I mentioned that the board struggled or worked through issues on their study last month, and are calling it the finance slash innovation, because it's both, as you've described, it's both of these things. And I appreciate your describing it that way. Cassandra.
Thank you. I am really happy that you mentioned that and talked about that. And Mike, that you brought up the innovation and finance study that we're looking at, because I'm curious what conversations you've had around Proposal A. You know, this is a financing system that was created before we had all these charter schools, before we had private schools. And we're now in a situation where we have funding based on headcount, but we're dissipating the headcount, and we're adding all these new schools. And clearly, something's going to break. Something's going to give. And so, like you said, you know, reform is great. You can't have a financial system, though, that is still living in the past, based on a system that we had 15, 20 years ago, and we have a completely different system now. So I'm curious, you know, as we continue down this road, looking at our own finance study, what conversations you've had about Proposal A? And do you think that there are certain reforms that we could look at, at least in the short term, to kind of get us to where we need to be, so that our schools are supported at an adequate level, and they don't have 47 kids in the classroom?
I'll hold my comment on that, because I know that Representative Bauer wishes to speak. Go ahead.
Very tough question, and you're absolutely right in trying to.
There you go.
There it is.
I just wanted to just make a couple of comments about higher education, because of course, that's a committee I've been on for six years. Eileen and I were at the Midwest Higher Education Compact Meeting, and, you know, it was very, and we all know all these statistics, but it was very concerning when they said, you know, Michigan's actually doing very well with college completion. We're at about 60% compared with the U.S. average of 62. So we're doing, you know, okay, not as well as something. But what he said, your challenge and dilemma to get to another 60% figure, but a 60% level, which is what we'd like to be with some kind of advanced education beyond high school. We'd like to have our population at that level, is the dropout rate. So I do think that it's so interrelated, and we know that, that, you know, I just would urge all of us to really look at that. How do we, we need a bigger pipeline of our students who have graduated, who are ready, who don't have to take as much remedial work, who then can be successful. So I think, again, it's certainly, you know, I'd love the opportunity to talk further, because it is such, so interrelated for the success of our state. And then, you know, the other reality that, did anyone also go to the Business Leaders for Michigan Summit yesterday, Higher Ed Summit, or Education Summit? It was excellent. They have come out and really are very vocally supporting that we need to put $100 million a year, because we've cut a billion in the last 10 years from higher education, both university operations, but also, you know, the entire tuition issue that, you know, we have our kids coming out of K-12. If they could get into a higher education system, I mean, it's absolutely, I think, unconscionable to have them graduating with the kind of debt they have nowadays, because we divested. North Carolina, again, they had a panel, and the chancellor was there, and he was saying that per student, they fund $4,000 additional dollars per college student that we were here. They've made those decisions to fund higher education, so their tuition is much, you know, much less comparatively. So just want to, you know, I love the opportunity. We have to work together, because it is, it is a P-20 system, and we need to do, you know, find solutions to all these problems.
And just to clarify, the dropout rate, you were talking about the high school dropout rate, is one of our?
Oh, I know. And it's very difficult. We've been a teacher, I've been dealt that, 15 years there, we saw a lot of kids back, young people and older people back in, you know, the different times they were ready.
For those of you who were able to drift in a little early, I know Representative Potvin was here. We had a presentation from our folks, because this tension between keeping order in a classroom so kids can learn, and yet, on the other hand, not throwing kids out of the classroom, and then expect they're not going to be likely dropouts, you know, is this balance we're trying to find between order and fairness. We're privy to some of that. I think Eileen had her hand up, and I'm going to go back, and everyone will hear, we'll have everyone's voice at some point. And then Marianne.
Again, thank you for being here. This is a very great day for us. I'm delighted to be here. I lived in Slovakia, where my uncle was the U.S. ambassador, and Slovakia at the time was Elskorn, and it was quite nice to live there. But I also had a chance to get to know the Slovak people. And while they held many of the same characters that we have in Michigan, a spirit of adventurousness, they didn't have the creativity, the immigrant mentality, I think that Americans tend to have. We have a reverence about us that is not duplicated in very many other countries, maybe Australia. And as I said at Mac, it may be time for us to recognize that we're not going to be able to shift the American zeitgeist on education, on the quality of education, to what we would all like, which is the Slovak reverence for learning, the South Korean reverence for learning, and therefore, but instead, try to figure out how to harness that, those characteristics that we have in strength, which are creativity, innovation, offensive inquiry. And if we could do that, then to me, the most effective curriculum that I'm seeing around this state, and we have hugely successful core standards, okay, our standards are very high, but the way that schools choose to implement those, with the kind of curriculum that they choose, if you go to a project-based learning model, if you go to something that is infused with technologies, form, engineering, math, the arts, if you use technology itself in learning, then what you see is a revitalization of the kids who are in those schools because they're actively learning. As an example of that, was it Luddington? What was the, like, the Michigan community that?
It was Luddington.
Fifty-five percent reintroduced meals. He just did, and his career, and has been doing experiments with I-PAS in kindergarten and second grade. When the second-grade cohort took the third-grade meals, without I-PAS in the third grade, but having had its experience, they scored six points higher in math and 16 points higher in reading than did the previous-year cohort, who did not have access to I-PAS. That's not scientific, but it shows that these kids are learning at home in different ways. And the longer we encourage teachers to not acknowledge that, and don't train teachers, and don't say these words, you know, this is really important to be watching, the longer it's going to take for us to figure out how to keep those high standards in place without kids learning well, and without touching on, without getting a problem in higher education. And speaking to the issue of whether or not we can successfully teach statewide Algebra II to all kids, I, it wasn't that I was an invalid about this, because in most countries, Algebra II is a verified territory. But we do urge you to go see what Paul's doing at the Oakland Career Tech Center, because I was stunned to have teachers say to us at that point, you have to include Algebra II, because we have kids here who are studying for law degree, who plan to put themselves through that school, and that's moving that skill that we're teaching them here in 11th and 12th grades. And you can't deny those kids Algebra II, because if you do, we're all in trouble. We have kids here who are going to be high-tech, well-reading people. That's how I should read it, it's such a. I was stunned to hear teachers saying to us, do not drop Algebra II in foreign languages. What happens when one of their workers, who is in a high-tech field in some way, ends up in post-Pharisee and can't talk to the natives, because they didn't choose Spanish? And since they can't engage. So to hear their teachers, who are highly qualified teachers, who have a bachelor's degree and a major, a lot of them with master's degrees, 4,000 hours of employment in their field, and anxious to make sure that they tell us that this can be done, it's a question of reorienting how people view TTE. And the last point I'd like to make, and I'll pontificate here, and I appreciate if you're listening, is that this is the only state in the West that has not had a dedicated funding stream for STEM. It's not that we need a better thing to do, but we need rethinking of why STEM is important in this state. There's a gap in the state between manufacturing base that we had in the past and the educational practices that we need now to replicate new high-tech manufacturing. That includes STEM and TTE, but we have not found a vocabulary yet for our teachers, so that they can understand what's going on openly across our campus. And until we find a way to have that dialogue across the state, we will need these systems on the very things that people need to go into a pre-secondary, one or two-year tech course, to be able to run our factories, to be able to do medicine at the levels that we are seeing for the future. The economists just had a very interesting poll out on exactly this, this manufacturing that we're seeing in other countries already has nothing to do with Algebra I, and has everything to do with Algebra II. And for this state to inadvertently turn its back on exploring that would be pretty silly, because that's how we've been doing it for seven years in the past.
Thank you. Representative Lipton.
Thank you. It's really a pleasure to be here. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in putting this forum together. As a former trial attorney and a great believer in the collective wisdom of a group of people to deliver a verdict in a legal proceeding, one of the things that I've noticed in my experience here is that oftentimes, when legislators get to a committee or what have you, suddenly, they forget that they have a voice, and that really what we're trying to do is, the committee process in its greatest form is the collective wisdom of people coming together and exchanging information. And so I hope that all of us can just take a moment and just sit back and just really just enjoy and also commit to an ongoing dialogue. Those of us who are in our second terms, and even those in our first.
As old timers, by the way.
Because of term limits, the people in the chairs over in the legislature will constantly change, and hopefully, the state board is more stable. But the idea that collectively, people can come together to solve problems and deliver what the citizens of the state elected us to do, I think is a very, very important thing that we should all take note of. I'm told that this has, this type of a joint meeting has not happened in some time, if ever.
Ever, maybe.
And so, I think that we should be fairly proud of the commitment and just the convening of this. And I would ask all of us to take note of the historic nature of this, and renew a commitment to continue this on an ongoing basis, because as I said, someone that is a firm believer in the collective wisdom of well-meaning and well-intentioned citizens to deliver justice, I think that that is, that is, there's no greater calling. So, thank you.
Representative Lipton may get the quote of the day, and we want you to make sure that you have that clear, what she said. It was beyond just the state board is more stable.
It reached her institutionally, but not personally.
Right. She wishes to rephrase.
I mean, we've got Richard.
Right. Are you up next? I think Marianne is next. Marianne McGuire, please.
I'd like to echo everyone else who's talked about how wonderful it is to have you here and to have this opportunity to voice your opinion. I was very pleased to hear Representative Dillon talk about classroom sizes. I think classroom size is basic to anything. And if we're going to be talking about excellent education and delivering quality education to our students, who we say are our most valuable resources, I think we have to begin with sensible numbers. We look to other states, they think 25 is high in a classroom. And we, right now, are routinely looking at 40. You're from Grand Rapids. I'm from Detroit, and that's exactly what we have now in Detroit. Children can't learn under those circumstances, and that's why we're seeing underhanded ways of getting rid of some of these students with what I consider unlawful suspensions and expulsion. So anything we can do to enhance that, I think it's just too basic for what we need. Thank you again for talking here.
Good to go, Dillon. All right. Representative Anik.
Thank you. And I will be brief, because people have agreed with, certainly some people have said and may repeat things. But another suggestion, I do think we should continue to do this, but I think also inviting the policymaking in the education committee, because I think sometimes we all get into our own dialogues. We're doing great work, and we're doing a different type of work with the appropriations side, and they do the education policy side. And all those things should be intertwined. And a number of times, I think, we do one thing in appropriations, and the education committee does something that completely changes what we did. So I think that's an important step. And I think it's also important that we do have the discussion about Proposal A sooner rather than later, because I think what we've been doing is doing short-term, trying rather than later, because I think what we've been doing is doing short-term, trying to do short-term fixes to a broken system, especially with the 21st century educational system that we now have. And I'm not suggesting I know the answer, but I think if you get people together in a room and have hearings across the state, as Representative Rogers is very good about having, you know, people, he gives people access to come in and give their opinions. And I think that's something that we should continue to talk about over the next, this session and the next session, because I do think it's a system that, in my opinion, doesn't fit our new educational system. And one of the things I think was also mentioned that we have to be careful of is, that I completely support is the P20 system, but before I was elected, I went and toured the Harlem Children's Zone. And one of the things they do there, and I think we work particularly all across the state, particularly in urban areas, is even looking before the, you know, there's a number of people, especially in our urban communities, I live in Flint, I taught in Flint, and I had kids that were thirteen, fourteen-years-old, having kids that have no idea how to be a parent. They're worried about, you know, the things a teenager is worried about, and they do the best they can. Some of them turn out to be very, very good parents, but assuming someone knows how to do it is because they have a child. You know, it's a recipe for disaster, I think. So I think we should try to find a way to incorporate a system where we, we look at each community as an individual community and develop a school system that works on practices that are tried, are sort of tried and true, but also look at the uniqueness of our state. And if an area has a lot of teen pregnancies, we can adapt to have programs that fit those communities. So I do love this discussion, and I think this is, I hope this is, as you said, I hope this is the first, not the last.
Dan Varner, please.
So let me add my thanks to those of my colleagues. This is a great conversation, a long one to do, and I'll look forward, frankly, to have the opportunity to repeat it many times going forward. I'll, I'll keep my comments very short as well. I've been trying to think about how to, how to describe what we're living in, like the time we're living in when it comes to education, and I've kind of landed on, for myself anyway, that we are living through the period where we, together, collectively, create post-industrial public education. I don't know if that's right or not, I don't, potentially provocative, but that's not the, the point of what I'm trying to get to. I think what I'm trying to get to is that there are kind of age-old questions that have existed, kind of around our education system. So for example, how do we prepare teachers well to teach in it? How do we accurately, incredibly measure the performance of teachers and students so that we're better able to support their improvement over time? How do we equitably fund education so that we are creating conditions that allow for successful learning and teaching to take place? But there are these new questions that have emerged as well, because we're living through this period of, kind of, you know, creating this post-industrial education system that I think it's important that we wrestle with. And I, we're clearly spending time on them, but some of them are clearly new questions. So for me, one of the, one of the big ones is, in a, in a world where we are creating so many new schools so quickly, what does an effective filter, if you will, look like that ensures that as many of these schools as possible have a high chance of success? Once again, a new question, how do we measure apples to apples, all of these different schools that have emerged, because frankly, there is an accountability issue here, we're talking about tax dollars at work, and it'd be a shame if we were making bad investments as opposed to good ones. And then, so there are a bunch of new questions. How do we ensure innovation? So if we're creating new schools, how do we ensure quality on the one hand, but also leave room for innovation and new school models? And then the most important one for me is, how do we ensure that we're not leaving anyone behind in the creation of this new system? And I don't have answers to those questions, but those are the questions that keep me awake at night, at least, when I think about what we're working through in this time. So thanks again for being here and look forward to, to having the opportunity to, to together develop some answers to those questions over time.
Appreciate it. Representative Dillon.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, I noticed that there's been a significant change in the makeup of our committee here since we started. My colleagues on the Democratic side seem to have an overwhelming majority, so I feel like...
Sure. How much less do we have? Just a cut, yeah. I'll, I'll think of something rather quickly here, but I appreciate the thought, very good. We did, didn't we? Oh, son of a, we lost our quorum.
So we can't vote?
Hate when that happens, yeah. No. In regard to uniqueness of, of district, and I'm hoping with what I think a lot of us are tired of hearing, we go from no child left behind, race to the top. I was a byproduct of what was called Unit Step. I was the only fully graduated class from Unit Step, and then they dropped the program. So I have to apologize, that's how I probably got here, because I was the guinea pig. But when you look at all these different things throughout the history of education, let's get something that can, we can live with for a period of time and find out if it actually works. It feels like we're changing things so dynamically that I'm not so sure what the better mousetrap is, but if, and I partially ingest, say, with the Common Core, at least it wasn't legislators that built it. Thank goodness. But that being said, is, is, is that the next best thing? And does it allow for that uniqueness within the district? And I think that is critical. But to that degree, with the mobility of kids these days, I am concerned. I moved out from Redford Township out to Livingston County a long time ago, and at that time, though, the school systems were about a year to two years different. That's changed now somewhat, but from state to state or from corner to corner, has it? And I don't think that's fair to the child either. We want them to be able to have that, but we want the flexibility in the classroom by the teachers so that they can still get to their end goal, but we still allow these kids to not walk in completely blind and say, "Oops, I'm either a year ahead or a year behind," and possibly lose some of those kids. And going back earlier, what I said about the funding, this is the time to converse. Had a conversation earlier this morning from somebody who actually was around during Prop A, and I, what, what I have to be forever thankful for is, since our bipartisan caucus was initiated as freshmen, we were given a thirty-day challenge by the speaker, then speaker, to fix education. Thirty days. We did it. We came up with some solutions that we thought that were bipartisan. I'm not sure where that paper ended up, but I can get you a copy. But we were, yes, thirty days. But everybody, as a caucus, we got all together, and we started meeting within the next two days afterwards and three days, and at least produced something within the thirty days that we all felt it wasn't perfect, but at least we did it. And that was the dedication of our, at that time, freshman caucus, now bipartisan caucus. But one thing we found is, all of the gang of fourteen, anyone we talked to, several of them came in to talk to us, because we needed the historical perspective. We didn't have it. We were then freshmen, now old timers at our third year and fourth, but they were gracious enough to come in and explain what they did, but to a T, what did they say? "We're shocked that it still exists today." And that surprised me. They said, "We were pleased, but fortunate, I love the ilk that Prop A was an issue over property tax, period." And then they all of a sudden realized that, oops, that's how we funded education. We've got to fix something in a hurry. And they did, under the circumstances, a phenomenal job, but it's time that we do take a serious look at it as a group, and I think collectively, we can come up with something that is more stable, more equitable, and get our kids educated and prepared for the future, whatever that might be.
By the way, I was a local superintendent at the time, and as you recall, there was that couple-a-month period of time, and we didn't know whether there'd be any revenue until it got resolved, I guess December thirty-first.
That's true. So you're used to the challenge.
Well, we're getting, yeah, getting there. Paul's our great teacher of the year, and I saw his hand up a number of times and wanted to, yeah, I'm, no, I'm, I'm doing the best, I'm, as I said, everyone will have a voice.
Thank you very much. And I, too, want to thank you for this opportunity to be part of history, I guess, as we look at what we're doing here today. And I think it's so important that we, as educators, teachers, administrators, work collaboratively, just like what we're seeing here today, with all of the key people being able to share information in, in order to make better informed decisions and work together for that. I, too, would like to extend to each and every one of you and your colleagues to come visit the campus. I extended the invitation to the State Board of Education, and many of them, and everybody has busy schedules, but they, they were able to find time to come and see exactly CTE 2.0 in action. And we certainly have, have that option available for you as well. We'd love to have you at the technical campus there in Royal Oak, there's a forum in Oakland County, and so I invite you, and we'd love to have you there at campus. You know, one of the things we take a look at and we heard, and it was echoed by many of our State Board members here, you know, we can need to look at situations as an, as not an either-or, but as an and. And I think in career and technical education, we have been able to do that. I mean, vocational education needed to change. It has had its head turned upside down and sideways and moved in the direction now for career and technical education, and I think that's very positive, because as Kathleen Strauss has said so many times here, when we talk about the three hours of relationships, that's key for any student and educator working on that, is develop the relationship. The relevance then comes in, and the rigor will follow, because when you have relationships and the relevance to what's being taught, then there is an opportunity to apply the rigorous standards and work toward that. There's a Time Magazine article, I don't know if any of you have seen it, it came out on May fourteenth, and it's called "Learning That Works." And I love this one quote that was in there, and it says, "I believe that some form of CTE is essential for world-class education." This is by a superintendent. He says, "Most students respond better to a three-dimensional learning process. It's easier to learn engineering by actually building a house than by two-dimensional learning and learning by abstract. Some students can respond to two-dimensional learning, but most respond better when it's hands-on." This is the part I like the best. "Every surgeon needs to know how to sew, saw, and drill." So when you look at what we're able to do and look at some of those areas there, I have one final comment, I think that's also very important, when we look at education and career tech ed in particular, and as it was mentioned by you, that we have to look at the area that we're servicing. And so are we meeting the demands and the needs of the local community and those areas are set up to do? I think that's very important as we look at developing and continuing to expand what's available through career and technical education. And I think when we look at education reform, so many times what I've been able to do this year is share the good news, share the wonderful opportunities, and really the skills that students have gained through career and technical education, and really look at that as an and solution. And many times, as Representative Rogers heard when we were at the Legislative Breakfast, we're seeing what we're able to do academically and technically for our students, so that they then can be successful contributing members of our society. So again, thank you for this opportunity today, and thank you for an opportunity to share my thoughts on this.
Thank you, Paul. Kathleen Strauss, please.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you were willing to do this, because I think this is really a very positive development, and I think we should, the community, that we should continue this such a commitment as we believe, this would be very helpful. I agree with a lot of what you've said, and I just want to get the two cents at the end of these. One of the things that Richard Seily said that I wanted to emphasize was that educate, that schools should be for more than just job training, that education is for the job training. And one of the purposes of education, that was public education was started, was to educate people to be participatory, educated citizens, well-informed, so they participate in our democracy and keep our democracy strong. And I think that's sort of gotten left by the wayside sometimes, with our emphasis on, on reading and math, which we do need, but we need more than that. And the emphasis on reading is that we can understand what's going on around us and from that, and it's our civic education. That was, I didn't agree with everything you said.
We would have been surprised, Ted.
All of you have said, and I think it's really very productive to do this, having, having Paul here as a spokesman for career tech education has been a real education for all of us, a participant in school. And Eileen said, just a wonderful analogy. We've heard this and we know it, we've had presentations on using this career tech education to learn the academics, doing that for their math and algebra and more, and even reading. And they had demonstrations at the school of teaching reading, enhancing reading, I mean, this is high school, little, but enhancing reading, when they read books, they read books like the Seven Things You're Supposed to Know to Be Successful. It's better reading than having all this, and we did that, and it's very helpful. So it can be done, I mean, no, we have presentations, but seeing it and talking to the teachers in their classrooms and talking to the students was very worthwhile. I'm glad to know that you can recall every, every month, too. That's, that's terrific. So the other thing that I'm really glad to hear that you're interested in, in looking at Proposal A, we discussed this and we decided as a board that we have to restart the conversation in a public manner, because a number of years ago, we tried to get people to talk about it, and we were, no one would touch Proposal A with a ten-foot pole. We couldn't quote tweak it. It needs more than tweaking, and it needs a real look, and how do we, how do we fund education to make it really great for the avenue, and how do we distribute it, that it's both likely to be looked at? So, and the fact that education is, as examples, where they also affect the environment, so much has changed. And now with the cyber, with charter school education, that people have, I mean, cyber schools, with the GAB, so to speak, open state doors, that's going to take students away from the traditional schools, and the money doesn't increase, the total pot doesn't increase if that means less money for local school districts, and class sizes sort of go up. I'm in Detroit, too, and I'm sorry. When I talk to teachers, it's, it's, well, over. One teacher I talked to over the weekend, just despairing, because the principal had assigned three more kids to her classroom, which she already had thirty-five kindergarten students, many of whom had come to school not even knowing their real names. Talk about they couldn't write their names. At the end of the semester, she's, at the end of the year, she's got them writing little sentences. It's just phenomenal what they do. I'm glad to hear the emphasis on recognizing valuable teachers and administrators. I'm distressed to hear our teachers are being attacked and they're resorting to problems. We have to get rid of all of them, that they're no good. When I go into schools, I'm in awe of the quality of the teachers, that they're not trustworthy. Those are just some of the things that I have to warn around. I've been on this for a long time, and I've been doing this a long time, but I'm still passionate about public education, so I really appreciate this opportunity to do this, and I'm sorry we haven't done it before, so we have to build on this first word and keep it going. Thanks very much for all of you being here.
John had some comments. I know we haven't gone back and forth, because I think you lost some of your folks, but everyone's had a voice so far, and I just, and I have some...
If there are any more points that your members would like to make or issues to raise, welcome them, but we should probably close while we're still feeling good about this discussion without any more long speeches, so we'll want to have another.
I would concur.
In the spirit of, so to wrap us up, I guess, listening, though, and this is, this is why it is helpful to have this sort of two-way discussion, a lot of the points, I think, that were made by Chairman Rogers and others about what we need to do together, particularly on the finance, I think this work together on a, the hard look at how we finance an innovative, future-oriented education system, we can deal with and accommodate and really look... future-oriented education system we can deal with and accommodate, and really look hard at issues, what's up with special ed's funding future? How do we deal differently in funding elementary, middle, and high school? How do we treat the kickouts of proposal aid now that we've been living with them? How do we incent performance in ways that are going to be meaningful? So I hope we can collaborate on that look together. I know a couple other points that were raised. The discussion about moving to a computer-based test, I mean, it freaked us out in the context of, boy, we really need to have a test that's matched to the standards, the competencies that we do want all kids to master. So please, let's not decouple our assessment from what we're trying to insist all our kids learn in terms of the 21st century skills and the math and numeracy and communications ability. So I think we can do that through the coming computer-based test. But just by way of, you know, our reaction, when we see action over there, it's like, whoa, what are they doing? We need to have a set of expectations for the skills all kids need to succeed at that next step, to become the phlebotomist who becomes a surgeon, to, you know, become the HVAC repair person who also may want to go on and run their own, you know, small business. And the last point, just echoing what Eileen and I think Dan were articulating, and Paul, we get, I certainly get nervous when we talk about going back to kind of a two-tiered college prep and vocational system, when I think the discussion today, and even Dan's articulation of the post-industrial education we're trying to deliver, we need a marketplace of rigorous CTE and other delivery modes that helps all young people. And this is what Peter Drucker said, who coined the term, the knowledge economy, who deliver broad, generalizable skills, numeracy, communications, problem solving, but in specialized contexts, because that's the way everybody learns. But that doesn't prevent the HVAC repair person or the phlebotomist from deciding, I want to get an MBA so I can run the business, or I want to move on to be able to be the computer CNC machiner, because I'm not sure I am destined for this health career. And that's what you saw, you know, you see it vividly in Paul's place, but you see it everywhere. I just went to enroll my youngest, I've got three kids, the youngest is going into 10th grade in the new New Tech High that Ypsilanti is starting. There, they have integrated disciplines that put together, like biology and history, and geometry and language arts, in an interdisciplinary, project-oriented, technology-rich module of learning. So that's a different variant of how to teach the skills in real application that we need to provide as a foundation so all people can be college and career-ready and explore whatever they want to do. So I think we need one education system that is a marketplace of rigorous, effective bundles of experience and competency, not a tiered one, which is what we're, which was the industrial model, where some are going to be the physicians, the managers, the educators, the accountants. Some are going to be on the line, working with their hands in a very simple task. No, that's 19th century. We need everybody to have the rigorous set of generalizable skills and the opportunity to specialize in whatever they want to begin to specialize in and respecialize, because we're going to have to learn a new skill. So that's the education system we need to deliver, and I appreciate your all's willingness to work with us on that.
I'd like to see if Craig Tedder, I don't want to put you on the spot, but representing the governor's office, if you'd like to make any comments.
I would just like to reiterate something that John said earlier, that was that this board, I think, really strives to work in a bipartisan fashion. And the discussion is usually very thoughtful. They don't sit here and try and make headlines, even though they have the opportunity to do so. And they unanimously supported a lot of the governor's positions. So if they contact you about something, there's a good chance that you're on the same page.
And I have one conclusion, but didn't know if you, okay?
I just didn't have a chance to speak here, other than just to say, so whenever.
Please, I'm sorry. No, Nancy, Nancy Danoff, please.
Yeah, I just would like to continue what John said in the same vein that, I think what, I think what we're working with right now is not an either-or system, it's a both-and system. We used to say that children were going to change jobs seven times within their lifetime. We're now saying they're going to change careers seven times. We don't know what those careers are or where they could lead them. And one of our biggest charges at the State Board of Education, and I believe yours as well, is to provide the capacity for our students to be able to become lifelong learners in a way that allows them to take whatever road they choose, at whatever time they choose it. A number of years ago, I had a great opportunity, just before the Olympics in Beijing, to go with several members of the State Board here to China to talk about education policy. And one of the things we discovered there was that although they had 50 students per classroom and they were learning core content, what they did not and could not learn was the innovation and the ability to adjust quickly. And they envied us for that. If we go back to a two-tiered system, we are going back to that lack of innovation and that lack of being able to adjust to what the world has to offer. So I would encourage you to look strongly and making certain we provide capacity in our system, not only for our students, but one thing I did not hear mentioned today was the infrastructure improvements in our school system that need to take place in order for this new, post-modern, post-industrial stage to take place. Too often, we're in schools where, yeah, e-readers would be great, but they have no bandwidth capacity to even be able to use them. Too often, we're in schools where, yes, it would be nice to be able to have kids in gym shorts that would then go on to become better learners as a result of not sitting so much in a classroom, but they have no gyms to use. And so I think that as we move forward, we have to consider, too, here's where we want to go, what is it going to take to get there from the ground, literally the ground up, and how are we going to address that? I'm like Representative, I hope I don't say this wrong.
Ennich.
Yeah. I don't have that particular set of absolute answers, but, boy, I sure would love to sit down in a room and talk with all of us together and say, where can we go from here, and how can we do that? Because I think that's going to become critical in making certain that where we want to get to actually is gotten to. So this has been great.
All right, I'll turn it back to you for any concluding remarks. I just wanted to mention that, as superintendent of public construction, I often find, my role here as chair is to kind of facilitate discussion. You very rarely get to say what you really think as superintendent, and that's not the role when we have board meetings. So I'll find another occasion to do that. But what I would say is, it's really great to watch, and I have to work at this myself. We want all of our kids, almost 2 million kids now that we have early childhood in this division, we think about it, it's 2 million kids in the state. I have to work hard to think, is there something that was said today that's different than what I agreed with in the beginning? Because I think our tendency is to listen to each other for what we agree with. And I often find myself saying, you know what, this is what I thought when I came in, but that's a good point, and that's not what I think when I left. And the more I think that we can do that, particularly, you know, I'm not a Democrat or a Republican, I supposedly was in bed with, supposedly.
You may have taken Lipson's line.
Supposedly close to Governor Granholm, and now I'm supposedly close to Republican Governor Snyder, and I work well with both of them, and so does this board, by the way. And that's our role is, kids first and foremost. But I think the more we can come into a meeting and say, was there anything said today that I really didn't agree with in the beginning, but that's a good point, and it's changed my view of the world, that's really what we want for our kids, too. So any concluding remarks you may have.
If you wish, say a couple words and then adjourn our two committees. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Just going to the two-tier concept that you were speaking of, what we have to do is, we have to change our vernacular. It is not a two-tier system, it is multiple opportunities. And also often, to your point, when we come in, we say things and we do things because that's the way they always have been done, or so stated. And that isn't the case. And so we don't want it that defined so that we close that off. I was thankful for having art and music and gym, because honestly, I probably would have stayed in gym the whole time. I know that. So by having all those things helped me as an individual through school and exposed me to a lot of different things that otherwise may never have been exposed to. And that's, to me, is one of the most critical components, is it is a whole life experience with some of these kids that don't have those opportunities that get to see them. So with that, though, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the school aid subcommittee.
Subway.
So we are adjourned there, and now make a motion for the Education, Department of Education Subcommittee. Make that motion. And so we stand adjourned for the school aid and the Department of Education. And thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and thanks to all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And some of the folks I work with, I hope you're able to join us for lunch, and if you are, are some of you able to stick, stay with us?
Yep.
And staff also, please be comfortable to join us, legislative staff. And some of our folks will help guide you down, right, Lisa?
Right, we're going to the upper part.
Unfortunately, that, we ended up being the same day.